Okay, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Here.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Zuber here and Chairman Green.
I am here.
I think my mic was on, whoops.
And we have our community planner, Jeff Goulet, and welcome to you all, welcome to everybody on the commission. Tonight, we have a pretty healthy agenda of six items, three of which are public hearings. I'll just get this out of the way, when we go through the public hearings, if you do get up to speak, we ask that you, at some point in time, fill out one of our forms, and when you speak, give your name and address, and then briefly state what you're thinking. It's very simple, and we do invite you to do that at the appropriate time, and we'll call for that. Let's see, we have minutes from our last meeting of May 7th. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion to accept the minutes of May 7th by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion? Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, our agenda tonight, again, has six items on it. Is there anything late from the planning staff?
No, sir.
Anything from the commission to add? Hearing none, seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel to accept the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our first item tonight is a public hearing for Supreme Detailing. We're considering a special land use for automobile service station on property which is located on the west side of Rhonda Drive and south of Joy. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes, this is a proposed use that requires a special land use in our light industrial zone located at 8755 Rhonda Drive. This is a multi-tenant industrial building, south side of Joy, west side of Rhonda Drive. The layout of the site is up on the screen before you. They're taking over the suite up in the upper right-hand corner of that kind of U-shaped building. The automobile service uses require special land use because the planning commission needs to evaluate the scale and scope of the businesses, look at whether or not they need outside storage for vehicles, those type of things. Supreme Detailing was in a location up on Joy Road until recently that had a special land use for the entire complex for auto-service type uses, so they didn't realize they needed a special land use when they moved into this building. Essentially, what they do is detail work and equipment installation, like equipment on our police cars and other vehicles, aftermarket equipment they install. So they don't really do any, you know, heavy repair or any of those type of things. All of the, you know, cars are kept indoors, they don't store any of the cars in the parking lot, so you bring your car that day, they take care of it, you pick it up. So it's a fairly light use in this particular location. There should be plenty of parking for pickup and drop-off. There's service areas around the back to get the cars in and out of the service bays. The Hensleys are here today to answer any questions you have about the use. They provided a fairly detailed report in response to the criteria in terms of explaining what the scale and scope of their business is. Staff feels that this is an appropriate use for the location and would recommend approval.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Eganberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is there a project sponsor that...
Yeah.
Okay, was there anything that you'd like to add to what Jeff?
Why don't you go ahead and go up to the podium?
Yep. Welcome.
How are you?
Thanks.
Yeah, I think Jeff pretty much covered the majority of it.
Yeah, he covered everything.
Covered the bases.
Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yes.
I'm Eric Williams, representative of Supreme Detailing.
Tina Hensley, owner of Supreme Detailing.
Okay, Jeff, is...oh, okay, there's a...it's not coming across on the microphone as much as I thought it would be, but that's okay. All right, welcome again. Any questions, concerns, comments from the audience? Anything concerning this project? No questions?
To close the public hearing.
Support.
Got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna start with the commission, then. Any questions, concerns, comments? We're just gonna open it up for anyone. It's pretty straightforward. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hi. So, now, why did you decide to move? Because your business is growing and...
Landlord decided to double my rent at the other place that I've been at for 23 years.
That'll do it.
That'll do it.
Why do you like the market? Are you...what is your business? I mean, are you busy all the time, 90% busy, or...
Busy all the time. Yep, busy all the time. And actually, it was a blessing because we do have more room over here than we did at our other location.
Parking, were you more in the front, then? Is that where you...okay.
Customers, they park in the front, and then we drive around the back, pull them in, and then clean them, and then they leave. You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do you use any kind of industrial chemicals at all in the detailing process?
Everything that we use is water-based, and then the city already has a previous list from when I was at my other location. They've got every chemical that we use.
So you don't think it's gonna impact the environment and the surroundings?
No. Nope, we've got a self-contained system.
Okay.
Filtered, and then it's clean when it comes out.
Thank you.
Yep, nothing goes down the drain.
Okay, anyone else?
I don't have any problems with this. Mm-mm.
Yeah.
Forward. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the request for special land use for automobile service for Supreme Detailing on parcel number 046990003714, which is also known as 8755 Rhonda Drive, for automobile detailing and equipment installation as requested.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Mr. Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes.
And Jeff, what's our next up?
This will be go to the township board on June 26th for final approval.
Okay, thank you very much for coming before us tonight. Good luck to you.
Back on the 26th, or...
Yes, I'll send you a letter.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, have a good night.
Good luck in your new location.
Thank you. Do we need to pull it out? I wanted to bring something up that Cora was astute enough to notice. Apparently, I was not listed as attending the last meeting, and I read the minutes, but I didn't pay attention to whether my name was there or not.
Oh, okay.
If your name wasn't there, you weren't there.
That's right.
So we...
We'll have Connie correct the minutes.
Okay, do we need to do anything under Robert's rules to formally change the...
We'll correct the minutes.
Okay, all right. So let it be written.
Jeff, it's also in every motion. She's not listed as well.
I thought you fell asleep right after we took the roll.
Nice, real nice.
Just kidding.
All right, our second agenda item tonight is the physical rehabilitation services, where we're considering a special land use for a medical clinic. This property is located on the southwest corner of Ford and Lott's Road, right across from the late Haydens. Anyway, Jeff, could you tell us more about that?
Yes, this is a request for special land use within our corporate park overlay district. Everything in the corporate park overlay district requires a special land use. This is for adaptive reuse of the Andy Pelk motorcycle sales facility that's been closed for several years there at Ford and Lott's Road. It's about .3 million acres, fairly small site, limited amount of parking out front. The use is for, you know, a medical office for physical rehab services. The owner, Mr. Beatty, is here tonight, or his office managers here tonight are a partner to describe the business if you need to know more about it. Essentially, it's a low-impact parking, you know, the customers come, they get their rehab services, and they leave. So essentially, it's just, you know, the two or three employees that are there during the day, and then two or three customers at a time. You know, there isn't...basically, they come as scheduled, there's very little overlap in the parking, so that's not going to be an issue. The site is in some need of improvement. They need to revamp the landscaping, get some irrigation in, and take care of getting the light back up in the...the light pole back up in the parking lot, and get a gate on the trash enclosure in the back. Other than that, he should be able to move right in and do what he needs to do. It's my understanding that they don't need to do a whole lot to the inside, other than, you know, paint and carpet and those kinds of things. It's basically, it's an open, you know, rehab center with equipment and stations and things for, you know, physical therapy. So the project sponsors here to answer any of your questions. Staff feels it's a good reuse of the property, get the corner cleaned up, get a business back in that building. It'll be a good thing overall. So we'd recommend approval of the special land use for a medical clinic at 39933 Ford Road.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is open. Would the project sponsor like to say a few words?
I thank you for taking the time. Yeah, we're really looking forward to and excited about moving a mile into...from Westland down into Canton at that very perfect location for us.
Can you stop me for a minute? Who are you?
Robert Beatty, the owner.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And, you know, we're ready to get started with the property, just as Mr. Goulet said, that it's a perfect fit for us, so.
All right, and want to say anything?
Captain McCoslin, IMAC Properties, we own the property. As you guys know, that building's been empty for a long time, and the reason being was we were real particular about the user. We had everybody from a gun shop to a bakery want to come there, and I get calls every day, and it just wasn't the right fit till Rob came along and I looked at his situation, and we made a deal to where I think he'd be a real asset to the community.
Okay, all right. If you'll stand put, see if...we'll see from the audience if there's any questions, any concerns, comments, anything at all, before we get to the commission.
To close the public hearing?
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, again, open floor from the commission. Anything concerning this property? Go ahead.
Where are you located right now?
We're just a little over a mile east into Westland, so we're over the bridge on Ford Road.
What is the reason you want to move to Canton?
Truthfully, I've been looking at that facility for a long time, even before I opened my original clinic there, but it's one of, we need...the location's perfect access-wise for us, for what we do, but the property where I'm at now, I've already exercised two of my options to go through those contracts and looking for something more freestanding. They went through some changes in that plaza, the ownership is of question, and I don't want to stay there when I can have such a great opportunity at that property.
A lot of physical therapy places in Canton, so is that...do you know why? I mean, Westland or Canton would be better, it's just the building, period? Because you guys are probably pretty busy also in Westland.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing on our side that develop...I know Westland's plans is to develop towards Canton this way anyway, and that's such a beautiful strip of Canton through that region that I think we're a perfect fit there from the neighborhoods that are both, you know, north and south of us, down Lott's Road and the existing base. You know, I've got like a decade's worth of patients I'm bringing with me. It's a pretty loyal crowd of people, so I just think it's a better...it's a better fit for us, always, I think it always has been. I've always...our place that we have now is very pretty, but we're gonna bring that same thing into Canton.
Just a quick question, are there any site requirement differences in this use as opposed to the previous use?
The previous use was a motorcycle showroom, so that's why it had limited parking, because it was a showroom use, which makes it hard to reuse for retail and other uses. So the medical office in this particular use and what they're doing, he gave you information on what their parking needs are, so it's a good fit for the use, because there's no place else to put parking. You know, it's a small site, it's pre-built out, there's not a whole lot else you can do with it without adding on to it.
Lighting, anything require lighting, landscaping, anything like that?
The conditions are listed. Basically, we...this is the original site plan for the dealership, it shows what the required landscaping was, so we just want them to restore to the original plan that was approved back in the late 80s. So the DDA does have some landscaping at the corner, and does have a landscape easement across the front that they maintain in front of the wall, but behind there, adjacent to the parking lot and along Lott's Road is theirs to maintain. So they'll need to add some irrigation and get, as I mentioned before, get the lighting put back in the parking lot, so.
Down at this end?
I have a concern about being so close to the corner. Has anyone looked at, you know, making a left out of there?
Driveway is the driveway. If you have to make a left out of there, you're gonna have to wait till the left turn queue at Lott's Road clears. So, you know, basically during the day, other than rush hour, it shouldn't be too bad. Usually, bad on weekends, it's usually during the day not too bad, so we've talked about that, it's just a limitation of the site, there's nowhere else to get a driveway, so...
Right. Because it's a private driveway, I'm guessing you probably couldn't do like right turn only? I know that's not ideal, being so close to Ford Road.
Well, they'll be able to turn left if they can turn left and get into the left turn queue there, or merge over into the right turn lane, so that's...it is what it is, so... That's why I would never ever want a corner parcel, because it's hard to get in and out, but, you know, most of the time during their most business hours, it's not peak hours, so...
Right.
Okay, any other comments from the commission?
I'd like to make a motion.
Do I hear a motion? Okay.
I move to recommend approval of the request for special land use on parcel number 04999000... I'm sorry, 0016005, which is also known as 39933 Ford Road, for a medical clinic for physical rehabilitation services, subject to restoration of the site to the previously approved site plan, including landscaping, parking lot lighting, and addition of irrigation of the landscaped areas, and provision of a gate on the trash enclosure.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further comments from the commission on this motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. And their next up is...
The township board on 6/26.
26. All right, good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it, look forward to it.
All right, our third agenda item of the evening is the Hampton Manor of Canton, where we're considering a preliminary PDD, Plan Development District. This property is located on the south side of Ford Road and west of Ridge. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan development approval for Hampton Manor of Canton Assisted Living Facility. Proposal's located on 7.29 acres and south side of Ford Road and west of Ridge Road. Actually, consists of two parcels, one off of Ridge and a larger portion of the property on Ford. The gentleman selling the property has a house on Ridge that he's going to retain. You can see that on the plan, which is that white area on the right-hand side of the property. The south part of the rest of that parcel goes all the way back, mostly it'll be used for stormwater detention, which is north of the stormwater system for West Ridge Estates. They're off of Ridge Road. So the proposal's for a 64-unit assisted living facility and a 59,000 square foot building. The definite benefits include provision of a sidewalk along the north side of Ford Road in front of our parks. We can get access and connection from the subdivision to the park on the north side. Since they can't make that connection, since they don't control the property on the south, they've agreed to propose that, provide better access on the north side to get from Ridge Road all the way over to the subdivision west of the park, so that'll provide good access to the park. The provision of transport van for residents, enhancement of the wetland buffers by supplementing the planting and removal of debris and non-native plants. They've got over 68% open space, they exceed...which exceeds the 25% minimum, and they provided additional parking for visitors over and beyond what the minimum requirements are, plus they've agreed to, you know, update and upgrade their architectural, you know, materials and things on the building. So the layout in front of you is a conceptual layout of the plan, the...you've got all of the traffic analysis and market analysis in your pack, and I won't go through that in detail. They're far enough west of the intersection that their traffic won't be directly impacted by the backups at the intersection. We've confirmed with MDOT that MDOT is completing...we basically sent their traffic evaluation to MDOT. MDOT is completing an evaluation for left turn phase analysis at Ridge and Ford Road. They're completing that, so basically this confirmed what we already knew at that intersection, but they have...they have no impact at that intersection relative to any, you know, creating any additional impacts or deficiencies at that intersection. MDOT's gonna have to take care of that one on their own. So, you know, with that, I'll, you know, turn it over to the project sponsors to explain more of what they're doing. Evan Priest is here as their engineer. Mr. Imran is here, who's the owner of the facility, and they can explain to you a little bit more about what they do, you know, and how they're going to operate.
Good evening, my name is Sam Martin, I'm one of the owners. Hampton Manor, we're a premier assisted living facility. We did a lot of market analysis, a lot of market research, as far as what the senior citizens, especially in this area, need, is really a premier assisted living. We really want to enhance their lives, do whatever we possibly can to make sure that they're living their life to the fullest, so we try to do whatever we possibly can to spoil them. Inside the building, we have movie theaters, we have beauty salons, we have a chef that cooks the meals, three meals a day, several activities throughout the day, from entertainment, from people coming in and playing music, Bible studies, church services, that sort of thing, so everything's kind of right there. If they get to a point where they can't make it to the doctor's office, we actually have physicians that can come into the building, so we do whatever we possibly can to make sure we're taking their life and enhancing it as much as we possibly can.
Oh, that's a lot of features.
Lot of features.
Where do I sign?
Probably lots I haven't thought of, or that didn't speak of it quite yet, so...
Yeah, where do I sign? I...didn't I get a motion to open the public hearing yet?
Oh.
Want to do that?
Motion to open...moved to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing on this project by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Eganberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Do you have any more to add? Okay, all right, from the audience, anything, any comments, concerns, questions, anything at all, come on up. Don't be shy. Nothing?
One letter from the adjacent resident that we provided you. I've discussed the project with him several times. I think Evan can address some of his issues, you know, relative to some of the issues with utilities on his property. The area is fairly wet, you can see there's a lot of regulated wetlands on the property. The adjacent property owner also has some regulated wetlands. He's still on well and septic. I think the project sponsors want to, you know, work, you know, with the neighbor, you know, if he needs to be connected to sewer, you know, they'll probably work, you know, during the engineering phase to get him a sewer leak, those kinds of things. One of his issues was getting around with access around to the back of his house. I think there's been a gentleman's agreement from the existing owner, Mr. Dribicki, over the years, that he can go on his property just to get around, and I'm sure they can make arrangements to allow him to use the driveways on this site to get around to the back of his house if he needs to. So they can work that out at a later date, but I think they're willing to work with him to make sure that the existing property owner is not impacted, so...
We went to the audience, and there were no comments. We have the one letter. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Eganberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, from the commission, any qualms, concerns, questions, what have you? Go ahead, it's open night.
Open mic night.
Open mic night, yeah.
Tell me where else Hampton Manor is? You said you have a couple, right, correct?
We have several throughout Michigan. Our latest build was in Davison, Bay City, Saginaw, so we have several throughout, so...
All private pay only?
Well, we are, but some of our buildings, we can take the waiver program, but the waiver program, they're getting tougher for us to want to sign up with, so we are gonna look at it in this area to see if that's the case, but for the most part, it is private pay, but there is a long-term care insurance, that if they do have that policy, that that pays a good chunk of it, and we also take veterans' benefits. Our buildings are fully licensed, so since we're fully licensed, we can take those benefits.
I mean, many of our residents who are going into senior care, the private pay, as you know, until their money is spent down, and then what happens? I mean, you know, they have to end up on Medicaid or some kind of assistance. Do you require them to stay there for a certain amount, like two years, must be private pay before they can get in? Is this like a high-end facility only?
Well, usually what we do, we do a market analysis as far as what the other competition is being paid, and we usually were a lot lower than what they are. So, but our amenities are a lot nicer. So because we're not a corporation, we can help them out on pay, we can work with them on an individual basis. If we meet with a family and they can only afford X, we will work with them, and we'll make sure that that's all they pay.
Market for private pay?
On that area, it probably averages around about $4,600 a month, so...
Could you please tell me...all right, so you said one of the side next to it is a house? Is that what? Okay.
Yeah. Off to the...
Is that the email that we received from that man?
Yeah, it's actually two houses next to him, so the letter you have is from the gentleman that's directly adjacent to it, which is right here, so...
Lot of drainage issues, is this going to improve then?
He's got regulated wetlands in the back of his property, too. I mean, it's an old house, it's been there forever, he's on well and septic system, there haven't been any improvements to the site in over a year. Basically, this was basically an open field for a lot of years, and, you know, if anything, the improvements on this site will probably help drainage. Evan can address some of the issues that he brought up in his letter, so...
I think some of the drainage ends up on his property, and we'll be directing that drainage into our detention system, which will go down in the southeast and end up in that...in the county drain there, rather than going on his property, so hopefully that'll improve his situation in that regard.
What happens, Jeff, when it...we do a building, something like this, and it makes the neighbors worse, the drainage?
They can't. Our ordinance doesn't allow...our ordinance says that they can't make their situation worse. They have to maintain or improve the situation, so if there's...so as Evan says, there's natural stormwater that's running from this property onto the neighbor's property, so they have to collect that and pick it up and take it to detention system. They can't allow that stormwater to continue to run across this property. So they're gonna...in this particular case, that situation will improve. So you can't necessarily disrupt the natural flow of water, but they can improve it and redirect it if it's causing a problem with the adjacent neighbor. So ordinance basically requires basically, you know, no net impact, you know, from a stormwater regulation.
One thing we also run into are transport services for seniors, because what we have for Canton, it stops at 5:00 and soon to be 5:30, but...so do you guys, in your other facilities, how long have you had transportation systems?
We'll have our, we'll have a bus for this building here, so they'll have their own bus. So usually if they wanna go to like Bingo's at their church, if they want to go to like casino nights, color-changing tours, visiting different areas and seeing the Christmas lights, so we'll take them on different trips that way, too. Shopping trips. Sometimes they just like going to Myers and walking around, and that's okay, we'll get them on the bus and we can do that, too, so.
Hours, I'm just trying to figure out what we have for seniors.
Twenty-four, seven.
Oh, really? Okay. 'Cause Myers is open twenty-four hours, you know.
Yeah, so they are the boss. So if they wanna do something, we're gonna do it. So that's how the rules and regulations come up. So when I meet with families, they ask me a question, like, "Do you allow this or this?" I look at their mom and their dad, I'm like, "I don't know, would you allow that?" And they're like, "Yeah, that would be great." And I'm like, "There's your answer," so.
Jeff, we have a lot of issues with our, we're looking at like our transportation for emergency services with all the seniors assisted living centers, you know, it's really reaching a limit. Do we know what our limit is, the amount of facilities that we're gonna?
Well, I mean, our limit's gonna be what the market demands. I mean, essentially, if you remember when Bickford came through a few months ago, and their market study, and as well as this market study showed, that Canton is underserved when it comes to senior facilities. As our community ages, you know, Canton may have to make an investment in, in additional ambulances or ambulance service, you know, to serve these facilities as demand for emergency services increases. I mean, every facility's a little bit different in terms of what level of care they provide, you know, how ambulatory they are, and, you know, I mean, this isn't not, this is not a nursing home. You know, it's an assisted living facility. So these generally are people that are, for the most part, fairly healthy, they just can't do everything by themselves anymore, and they need, they can't live by themselves. But that doesn't mean they're not, you know, that they're not, they're not bedridden and they're not sick. So the number of, of, you know, of, of transports we have to these facilities, not as much as we're gonna have to Sienna Healthcare, or to some of the rehab facilities where people just came out of the hospital, those kinds of things. I mean, this is a permanent home for these people once they move in here. So, so whether or not they're in an assisted living facility, or whether they're in the home, either the ambulance is going to the home to pick them up, or it's going to the assisted living facility. So if they're a resident of Canton and they need additional care, that run's gonna happen irregardless, so.
You have to strike a balance, so maybe before the next meeting on this, we could find out where we are with that before we have to make an investment for more emergency services.
And I, and I think Christopher Stockline, who probably has a good handle on that, can, you know, that they, you may ultimately do a study session with the board on that in terms of what their, you know, what their projected need is based on the demographics. That may be part of their accreditation in terms of their evaluation relative to emergency services, so.
Couple presentations, and we were, that's most of our runs are to facilities like this, so maybe we could get a report from him again.
Okay. I have a question for the future, because of the fact that our population is growing older, right? Is there, you're landlocked here, there's really no room for expansion. Is that something that is of concern to you in this location?
No, you know, we, we try keeping it a home-like type of a feel. We don't want someone to walk into our buildings and make it feel like a, a, a facility or an institution. We want them to feel home-like. So we want that kinda home-like feel, we don't really want it big and overwhelming. Unfortunately, in that situation, people age in place, and then they go on hospice and they pass, so unfortunately, it's kind of a revolving door.
Right.
You know, it never gets to a point where, you know, of course, that's why we're here, is because we see the need for it in Canton, so, but we, we really wouldn't want to expand even if we had the property. We want a home-like type of a feel.
Gotcha, okay.
Sure the people to the east would ultimately wanna sell, if they wanted to do to expand.
Well, I know, but that's not, but while you're on that subject, I wanted to ask you, should this get approved and we get to the site plan phase, right? Would they be amply buffered by landscaping and?
You can see the conceptual landscape plan here, so, I mean, there is a, you know, what they're doing is because there's a lot of wetlands along the property, they're going to enhance the wetlands with some additional vegetation, get some understory placed back in those wetland areas. But up front where the parking lot is, that's where the wetland is not, and that's where the house is. So have a standard berm there with evergreens, you know, to buffer the house from the parking lot, just like we do for any other non-residential site.
All right. And, and because obviously this is gonna have, have full facilities, and we're right adjacent to, you know, septic tank, et cetera, et cetera, will they have the option of tapping into the?
Evan, you know, mentioned to me before the meeting, he'll be glad to work with the neighbor on making sure they're accommodated if they need to connect to public sewer or public water.
But they won't be forced into it? It'll be their choice?
That's between the two of them. We can't force them, but if their septic system fails and he connects to sewer, you know, I'm surprised the septic system hasn't failed already, so, I mean, it's pretty wet.
Well, I'm always concerned with onerous development that causes someone else too much.
Well, we've got, we've got a commitment from the owners to help them out if they need help, you know, with public utilities, so.
All right, those are the only concerns I had. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there's one more. You talked about that, that homey feel. I was looking at your elevations, particularly the, the west elevation, it's very, very plain. Is there, you know, if, if we get to the site plan issue, is there anything we can do to kind of like liven that, that elevation up? I mean, how about some more fake dormers? I'm just trying to throw some ideas out there. It, it looks very institutional, and I know that you just said that you wanted to get away from the institutional feel.
When our buildings are done, they're beautiful. They really have a beautiful look to them. It is a very home-like feel. It's kinda hard to tell with the drawing.
I know, it's a, for the rendering.
But our buildings are beautiful, you know, and we wanna make sure we accommodate the needs of Canton, whatever type of materials you would like us to use. Usually we go over beyond that anyway, so with lots of stone and so forth. And we actually bring that feel inside as well, too. So if we have stone and so forth on the outer pillars, we bring that into the fireplaces, we bring that in. We bring in, uh, natural granites around, that kinda enhance it as well, too. So we really bring a home-like type of a feel to it, so.
Yeah, I was, I was just hoping that maybe, particularly, particularly like the south side of the west elevation there, it just needs to be broken up more in terms of that long run of?
It'll pop, trust me. When it gets done, you'll be impressed. It'll pop. Unfortunately, this.
I'm holding you to that, if we get that far.
Please do, do so, so I guarantee I'll, I'll meet or beat your expectations.
Okay. North side looks, looks good, but it's a, it's a, that's a smaller, smaller run.
And this is, this is a preliminary PDD, so the final PDD will be back, so they'll have more details as they flesh out the design of the project.
I understand, okay. All right, anything else from the commission? Yes, go ahead.
So we had a facility like this probably two months ago. I think it was on Denton Road, and we, they.
Bickford on Canton Center.
Yes, he wanted to switch it, though, from assisted living to apartments, remember? What facility was that? It was near Cherry Hill Village, and he said, because his market study showed that they couldn't do.
We, we moved from an, a independent living senior apartments to regular apartments. That was Uptown. That wasn't, that wasn't assisted living.
Was it just in that area that senior housing wasn't needed? I mean.
Well, they provide senior housing in their first-level apartments for somebody, I mean, remember you, you discussed how many seniors that they leased to? So the, the project that Bestec had in Uptown was a concierge, high-end, independent living seniors. That, that particular product couldn't be marketed in Canton because of the, basically the cost, and they couldn't get financing for it because of the, of, that didn't have anything to do with assisted living, that was an independent living facility, but it was a concierge, you know, type facility. And so they just went back to their original PDD approval, which was standard apartments. They do rent to seniors in those apartments who are still, you know, not needing assisted living, and they have, you know, they have at-grade accessible apartments within those. So that's kind of a whole different type of project.
Okay, so it's because it was high-end is why the market didn't support that?
Right, 'cause it, yeah, the, that particular concept, yeah, was, was a very different concept. They had all of their meals basically cooked for them, you know, they had a personal chef, they had, you know, you know, a lot of personal services, even it was, it was independent living, but it was provided a lot of personal services, so, but that was a different type of project, so.
Yeah. I have two questions for you, sir. One is what's, you, we're talking about a sixty-four unit facility right now, so does that mean there'll be, but the maximum capacity would be sixty-four people living there?
Um, we can also accommodate like husband and wives. So we'll be actually licensed for, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but there, we have quite a few apartments that can accommodate husband and wives. So I believe it'll be, I think it's around seventy-two or seventy-four, we can accommodate, but that doesn't really happen too often, you know, so.
So in, by your experience in the other facilities that you have, you know, what, what is the percentage of seniors that come to, you know, live in this area, locals, and how many of them usually come from outside, just in a ballpark?
Most of the time, it's, it's probably ninety-eight percent local, you know, and what kinda happens is, when one or two people move in, they talk to their church members and they talk to their friends, and next thing you know, they're having card parties and all their friends are there, and that's kinda how it works. So it's, it's like opening up a country club, you know, everybody wants to have their friends at their country club, and it's, you know, that's what we're trying to create, of a country club type of a feel, and they're so excited, they tell their friends, and everybody kinda knows everybody. It's kinda neat, you, you walk down the hallway, when people are doing tours, they're reading the doors, and they're like, "Oh, my gosh, I went to school with this person, I know that person," you know, and so it's really pretty neat, so.
Jeff, there's a question for you.
Sure.
So right now, when we, suppose we go ahead and, you know, give consent and they go ahead and build it, and for some reason, this facility does not do well, and they're to shut shop, then what happens to the liability to the, to the neighbor who has a concern? You know, what, what happens? Who takes care of his drainage problem?
Well, I mean, his property's gonna be his property, and whatever, you know, he's, you know, whatever happens to the facility, just like anything that's built, you know, always has the, you know, potential of, of, of not doing well. I don't know that there's much chance of that unless the whole company goes belly up, and then it would be sold and retrofitted. I mean, I mean, basically, he's gonna have his landscaping buffer put in, he's gonna have any drainage and utility things taken care of adjacent to his property, so, I mean, the only difference is, is he's gonna either have a, you know, a property next door that's operating or not operating, you know, for a period of time. So I'm not sure how to answer that, but we've never had a, a senior facility in Canton go under. That generally doesn't happen. They're not gonna get funding for the facility if there's no market for it.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Nothing down there? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend preliminary approval of the plan development on the parcel number zero-six-nine-nine-nine-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero.
Zero-zero-three.
And part of the parcel of oh-six-nine-nine-nine-zero-zero-zero-three-zero-zero-zero for Hampton Manor of Canton Assisted Living.
Sorry. Support.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion from the commission on this motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Ataria?
No.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Motion carries, and their next step would be what, Jeff?
Uh, to the board on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Our next agenda item is the ridge, where we are considering a, a final site plan approval for property which is located on the east side of Ridge and south of Cherry Hill. Jeff, could, can you give us more detail on that?
Uh, yes, you've previously seen the first two phases of River Hill, or the River Hill Ridge at Cherry Hill Village. Those are the two pulty sections. Mr. Vary retained the eight acres here, which was the rest of the Houck property on Ridge Road. Let me get to the map here. It has kind of a strange configuration, it kinda wraps around an existing house on Ridge Road. Property also includes property on the west side of Ridge Road, but that's not included as part of the site plan approval, that'll be done in simple splits on the west side of Ridge Road. So essentially, the final site plan includes thirty-one units within this development. It has connection off, you know, main access from Payne Street off of Ridge Road and up Revere Street. It also connects to the end of Grant Street within Cherry Hill Village. The main difference between this and the preliminary plan is due to some utility conflicts they had. On the north end, they've decided to cul-de-sac the road at the north end, that will actually be a better traffic condition on Ridge Road and prevent some conflicts there relative to passing and turning on Ridge Road at that particular point, since we'll have some driveways for existing houses, or new houses on the other side of the street. What's kind of unique about this, and what we encouraged when the plan development came through, because this is the beginning of the historic district, we wanted to, as, as you came into the village, we wanted to make sure the historic fabric of the village was maintained by having the houses face onto Ridge Road. So part of what's happened over the past year or so is, is the township has been working with the county to get this portion of Ridge Road reclassified from a county primary to a local, so that the county will allow driveways out onto Ridge Road. So the county's only gonna allow four splits on the west side, and then there's, I think, seven lots on the east side of Ridge Road. So these lots are wider, they're a hundred and ten feet, ninety to a hundred and ten feet wide along Ridge Road, so they're much wider than the typical fifty-five-foot-wide lots within the, the village itself in this particular area. Plus, so when you come into the village, you know, you'll have a standard driveway coming out to Ridge Road with houses that facing Ridge Road, just like the other houses that are in the historic district already face Ridge Road. So that, so when you actually come into the village, you'll feel like you're entering the village, you know, rather than looking at backs of houses. So that'll be a nice kind of conclusion to this last little piece of this portion of Cherry Hill Village as, as we develop out, you know, this section and making sure it's, its context is appropriate. One of the things Mr. Vary is doing, there's a little park area that exists in Cherry Hill Village right now on the north side of Grant. He has a park area just to the north of that within this development, too, so he's gonna combine those areas, complete those, irrigate it, and make it available so that both associations could take advantage and use of that. And his association, which will be a separate condominium association, will irrigate that and pay to maintain it, you know, rather than having it, you know, try to figure out who's responsible for what area. He also has some park area to the north, and he'll have a connection through that park area to Ridge Road, so people can, can walk out onto Ridge Road. There'll be a continuous sidewalk along Ridge Road, we'll have street trees along the inside of the sidewalk along Ridge Road, so we'll get some streetscaping along that section, so it'll be treated like any other subdivision, Ridge Road will be treated like any other local subdivision street, essentially. Let me just bring up the plan. So this is a final site plan. They've got a couple of things to finish up with engineering and an escrow agreement to complete before it goes to the township board, but from all other practical purposes, the, the plan is ready for construction. And Danny, would you get up and say anything about the project? Here's the color rendering showing the cul-de-sac, the connection and the, the park area at Payne and, and Revere, and there's this other park area up here behind the existing house with the sidewalk that runs south of the house through the park area internally to the portion of the development. You'll see that the, the yellow, so everything in yellow would be the new lots, everything in the light green would be the park areas and common space.
So Jeff, twenty-five to thirty-one, those will have driveways onto Ridge?
Twenty-five through thirty-one, yeah, those will have direct driveways out onto Ridge.
Rest of them will get in on Revere Street?
That's correct, so. And then on this parcel on the north, on the parcel on the west side up here, there'll be four parcels ultimately done with a simple split, so there'll be four, but that's not part of this site plan, that'll be done as a simple split on the other side, 'cause that's all the county would allow on that side of the road, I believe, so. Danny, you have anything more to say?
I can say that, that Jeff and I worked an awful long time on this little eight acres, probably more than we ever did in the hundred and some that we did in the village. I really liked the way it turned out. We had, we actually had county approval on our exit out on Ridge Road, and then we had some issues with, well, my biggest issue was, we had to build it for a forty-five mile-an-hour road, and it was getting reduced down to twenty-five, which is gonna happen here real soon. It's been about a year and a half in the process. But then we had utility pole issues, we had, it was just one thing after another, and Jeff and I sat and discussed about creating the only cul-de-sac in the village, even though it's not Cherry Hill Village. And I talked to Ali at the county, and he's, was, loved it, loved the fact that we didn't have another cut on a Ridge Road. So it put us a little bit behind on the engineering. Like Jeff said, we got a couple of cleanups. We should have our, at least our approval letter within the next week or so from the county. We already have sewer water and soil erosion. The, the financial guarantees went to mail today, so Jeff and Mark will probably receive those either tomorrow or Wednesday. But we're anxious to get this finished up, and.
You originally had where the cul-de-sac is to go out to Ridge Road.
It originally went out to Ridge Road. Yeah. Yeah.
And one of the, actually, one of the concerns for Cherry Hill Village residents was creating more through traffic to Grant Street, so, one resident that I talked to last week, at least, liked the fact that it terminated, so it would basically cause their traffic to go out to Payne, to down Revere into Payne and prevent a lot of cut through traffic to the end of Grant, so there's only basically 20 lots that are on that internal road, you know, north of Grant Street, so it's, it's, it's fairly limited in terms of who will use that section of road.
So in order for them to, you, if you have one of those, is it 24, 24 lots in there, you have to come in elsewhere, you have to come in from, what?
We'll come in down here in River Hill Ridge, which is only one block in, and come up Revere Street, so, so this is all part of River Hill Ridge, so you would come in, whoops, you would come in just south, see Lot 1 just to the south, that's the first lot in River Hill Ridge, so Payne Street comes in.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, Payne comes in just south of Lot 1 through 4 there.
Or you have to come all the way up from, from Coolidge?
And make your way down Grant Street, right.
Okay.
So, so essentially Payne Street is their entrance.
Gotcha, okay. What reason was there for the west not being designed, laid out at this point?
That 25 mile an hour issue, I mean, to keep it as simple as possible, it was the county basically said, because at one time, this was two separate parcels, there was no right-of-way for Ridge Road, believe it or not, there was, I should say, I'm speaking incorrectly, there was no, I'm going to say it was an easement, but I know I'm using the wrong term, so, the county basically asked us to minimize the driveway cuts on the west side, in turn, them, the township, myself, all wanted it to go to 25, it was, like I said, I took more time on this than I did
I hear you.
The four phases of Cherry Hill, or five phases of Cherry Hill that we did.
The county has a rule on a county primary, if you do a subdivision or site condo, it requires access internally to that development only, not direct access to a county primary, so we worked with the county, and they agreed to with, I think we're trying to make Sheldon Road, south of Michigan, a primary, they didn't want that because it added miles to the primary, so we took advantage of the fact that this was about the same length of road, so basically, what we did with the county in the state is we flipped what was primary and what was considered a local road, so essentially, that's the only way that the county would do 25 miles per hour here, that, that the only way they could do it was, was treated as a local kind of subdivision road to get it to a 25 mile an hour speed limit, we're still waiting on the final letter from that, so he will not be able to get permits on those lots until we get that. One of the things about those lots too is they're in the historic district, so one of the things that's in the agreement is Danny has to go through the historic district commission on all the lots that face on Ridge Road to get architectural approval of those homes, so just like the two that are being built on Cherry Hill Road, those, both, those two lots that he bought from the township a while back that are being built now on the south side of Cherry Hill on those corners, those had to go through some architectural review with the HDC, so, so we'll make sure with that we get, you know, a variety of styles and to make sure that all of the, you know, the house designs and porches and things are done correctly, you know, that are...
How far south will the 25 mile an hour limit begin?
I think it goes down to the River Hill Ridge entrance.
Yeah, I think it's just past, there's a second entrance, right? No, no.
Yeah, just, just to south, just to the south of Payne Street, so, because I think it's 40 miles per hour as you come around the curve, and then as you come up the curve, then basically it's, you know, it's basically prima facie, you know, 45 miles per hour. So this is the last little puzzle piece in this area that I'll be glad to, to get finished up, so.
Anything else from the commission? I mean...
I have something. So, as sad as I am that my dead end on Grant Street will come to an end, I, I do like the, the setup of it, I think anywhere that you have a straightaway in Cherry Hill Village, it becomes kind of a, more of a 35 mile an hour zone, which is, is scary, considering there, a lot of us have kids on Grant Street, so I do like the fact that it's going to, you know, head down Revere to Payne, one question I have for you, Danny, will Bro Homes be building any of these, or just Levoni builders?
No, we're going to do the same like we did with Cherry Hill, with the village, it'll be both of us, I just do all the development for us.
Okay.
That's it? Okay, Commissioner Graham Hudek?
The reason they're going down to 45 is just because of the residential area, this increased residential area then, right?
Well, right now, it's 45 miles per hour because that's what it is, and it's considered a county primary, so the state basically, on a county primary, the state, you know, state police basically sets the speed limit, so in order to change it from 45 to something else, they have to have justification based on what the average speeds are, you know, it's an 80 percentile kind of thing, average speeds to set the speed limit, so the only way the county then has control over setting the speed limit is if it's a local road, so through the state police, we know we'd never be able to justify a lower speed limit, so the only way to get the speed limit down and get it to a village speed limit like the rest of Cherry Hill is, is to treat it as a local road, so, so it has to be classified as a local instead of a primary to do that.
There's a lot of traffic there now, so...
That's a good reason to slow it down, so.
I mean, they're not going to, but they don't want to put driveway cuts because they want to slow it down.
Well, I mean, I mean, there's, there's not going to be that many driveway cuts, I mean, you have the existing houses there that have driveway cuts already, but as a county primary, the rule is by the county, you cannot have driveways directly out onto a county primary, so that was the whole design issue that we were going back and forth on, is, is how do we accomplish getting the houses facing to Ridge Road with the driveways out to Ridge Road like they, all of the rest of the older houses on Ridge Road are already doing.
Left turn lane there, are they going to do a study?
There's a bypass lane at Payne, so Payne Street already has a bypass lane, so the county already required that. Well, they're not adding another entrance onto Ridge Road, so the county will evaluate each driveway as they come in, as part of a driveway permit process, so, we're not going to have the friction point up at the entrance, I think they required a bypass and D cell lane when you were bringing Revere Street out to Ridge Road, so that's no longer going to be necessary, so that'll get rid of a friction point or a, or a turning issue there, so, so it'd be...
So, as it is right now, is as it will remain, just the speed limit will change.
And ultimately, 11 driveways?
Yeah. Well, we're removing one house, so it'd be 10 additional to it, what, what is there?
It'd just be like Hanford Road, so.
Alts or...
And do we know, I know that you said that those on Ridge are going to have to go before the historic commission, but do we know generally what the houses are going to look like?
I think Danny has a wide complement of houses he built in the latter phases of Cherry Hill Village, I think you had how many different models and how many different elevations?
I want to say there was eight models and four or five elevations for each home, we're, we're basically carrying...
They're following the same pattern?
Yeah, we're carrying right, oops, right over what we did.
Gotcha, except for those on Ridge, which is...
Those will be, those will be different, they'll be more of an estate style, even though they're on Ridge, but they're a bigger lot, you know, they'll be a bigger size home, same with the ones on the other side, because those are all walkouts up to the river back there, those would be really nice, once we get the barns out.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the final site plan for the Ridge Site Condominium, also known as Phase 3 of River Hill Ridge at Cherry Hill Village, located on part of parcel number 074990008715, and part of parcel number 074990010710, as proposed.
Don't fight over the support now. All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner, Commissioner Egenberger, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, okay, and the next phase for...
We'll proceed on to the township board, hopefully on the 26th if he gets his final county approvals.
Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next agenda item is the towns at Cherry Hill, where we're considering a site plan approval for property on the south side of Cherry Hill Road and west of Denton, Jeff, could you give us more?
Yes, this is the site plan for the Plan Development District you reviewed for the towns at Cherry Hill by MI Homes last month, proposed site plan consists of 93 residential townhomes and 16 buildings on 8.37 acres, plans are generally consistent with the Cherry Hill Village overlay district and the plan development agreement approved by the township on May 22nd, the project provides a transition from the commercial office uses on the north side of Cherry Hill to the single-family condominiums being constructed by MI within the corners adjacent to and south of the development, so essentially, they've taken care of all of the issues that we had with the preliminary site plan, they've added some additional detailing to the sides of the buildings to add more windows and kind of balcony-type, you know, elements to the sides of the buildings, they've, you know, finished up the streetscape plan, which includes, you know, the, the lighting, the landscaping, all of those kinds of things that we normally see along that section of Cherry Hill Road along with the stamped, stamped brick area adjacent to the, the on-street parking, the, you know, the landscaping in between the buildings and in front of the buildings has been modified to make sure it's scaled right to the area that the landscaping's fitting in, other than that, it's pretty much, you know, in final form compared to what you saw last month, it's been engineered with all the utilities from preliminary standpoint, and is, you know, we would recommend approval of the site plan at this time.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
You know, all of the residents were notified that the site plan would be considered by the planning commission tonight, so I hand stuffed all of the envelopes to make sure every single house got their notification, and we did have several residents came in and looked at the plans before the meeting.
Diligence done.
Okay, we're going to start down, down here, Commissioner Atariah, do you have any comments or concerns? All right, Commissioner Graham Hudek?
My only question, Jeff, is the, the traffic study, did Wayne County say anything about the traffic study that accompanied this?
We've sent that on to them, we'll, we'll work with their traffic division to optimize traffic, traffic signals, so.
Rangel? Commissioner Zuber?
As I said last time, I actually think this looks pretty nice, so I'm, I'm eager to see it built.
Commissioner Egenberger?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
No, no questions.
Satisfied as well, do I hear a motion on this project?
Sure, I move to recommend approval of the proposed site plan for the towns at Cherry Hill Condominium on parcels number 073990005718 and 073990001707, subject to minor adjustments to the landscape plan for buildings 6 and 7, and clarification of the pavement cross-sections on the plan prior to review and approval by the township board.
We've actually received those, and so they're ready for the board, so those changes have been made, so.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett, any further discussion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, so the fourth, and the next step for that one is... Jeff? Oh, you're looking it up.
Item is item number six?
No, no, we're, okay, this goes to the board next?
Yeah, 626, busy meeting, so.
All right, thank you, our sixth agenda item for the evening, the TNT Fireworks seasonal sales, we're considering seasonal sales permit approval for use of the property at Meyer, located south of Ford Road, east of Canton Center, Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is a request for seasonal sales permit for fireworks sales and the parking lot at Meyer there in the area where it was last year, they require compliance permits from the building services prior to erection of the tent and the perimeter fencing, we had some issues with them last year relative to the tent erectors and things, Rob spent a lot of time with them last year, so we, they've been made aware of those issues, and hopefully we won't have the same issue relative to set up this year, Ms. Wilson is here to represent the item, if you have any questions about what they're proposing to do, essentially, they're going to set up by June 23rd and be done, you know, soon after July 4th, so.
Okay, hi.
Good evening, thank you, Jeff, too, I appreciate all your help, my name's Jill, and I'm with TNT Fireworks, as Mr. Glaze said, we did have some issues last year regarding the tent, it was a, a pole tent that was required to be staked in the parking lot, typically, our tent companies stake, you know, two stakes on each corner, on each pole, Canton Township, you guys required three, so we had to get the tent company back out there to stake, put the third stake in, and then we had some issues with like our sidewalls because of the flooding, all of that has changed in a sense, nothing's changed as far as location, we are using a frame tent this year that will be weighted with 350-pound weights, we also have an eight-foot white fence that will go around the tent as a perimeter, and that was suggested last year by the building official as well, so.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, we're going to start down at this, start down at this end, Commissioner Bennett?
No questions, I thought it was pretty straightforward, so.
Hi, Commissioner Zuber?
Can't think of anything.
Commissioner Engel, all set, Commissioner Hudek, Commissioner Atariah?
No questions.
All right, I, I don't have any issues either, other than, don't sell to my neighbors, I don't want to...
Yeah, really?
I don't want to hassle to my, you know, with my dogs and stuff.
No, but you want them to buy from TNT Fireworks, because I promise you, like, we don't sell any other type of fireworks, just TNT, and we are big on safety, so, I promise, if your neighbors are, they're going to buy them.
It's not safety, it's the noise.
I know, I know.
So, could you, could you like ask everybody where they live, and if they say, I won't say my subdivision, but...
I'll make sure not to give out your address, though, I mean, because that could be worse.
You'd sell dog earmufflers along with the...
Yeah, there we go, there we go.
Thunder jackets. I move to approve the 30, the one 30-day seasonal sales permit for the TNT Fireworks Company in the Meyer parking lot, parcel number 058990003720, commencing on June 23rd, as shown on the plans, and subject to obtaining appropriate permits and inspections from building for erection of the tent and placement of perimeter fencing. Or, that was a long sentence.
Yeah, for 30 days.
It's, yeah, it's not 30 days that we will be out there, but I understand your permitting is 30 days, yeah.
I have a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by, who supported, oh, Commissioner Engel, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we do a voice vote on that, good luck to you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, all right, we have staff referral of one item, boy, you guys are going to have, have a light, light work here, right, only one item, anyway, Uptown Apartments, Phase 4, we're sending to staff, do I hear a motion to do that?
So moved. Support.
All in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, anything else to discuss?
No, there is no public hearing scheduled for next month, we do have one site plan that we're in the process of, they need a variance next week, but they'll be, it's in addition to the clubhouse for Canterbury Muse, right now, that's all we've got for you, unless Uptown comes back in and is ready, so.
Good, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you so much, folks, appreciate you.